Please rise and give priority to the North Hill Community Club members to ask questions first. So with that, are we ready to start? Tracy Buxton, City Council Position Number Five.
You know, on a rainy night, there's probably a lot of other things you might want to do, right? Strolling in the park? Just kidding. So, my name is Tracy Buxton, and I'm a current council member for the City of Des Moines, Position Number Five, and I'm running to retain my seat coming up here. And I would say my platform is really the same as it was last time I ran, to work for a safe, green destination community, supporting those three core values. So, I would say in regard to safety, that includes promoting safety for the entire community. So, I've advocated on behalf of the community to the police force and to the staff and our leadership for safety features that different people would want in their community. I have advocated actually for the police force, to the administration, for things that the police force has wanted, or with legislators, have worked on that route. And so as a result of my work in regard to safety, there have been changes in, little changes, in our community, I mean, from a crosswalk sign to changes in park schedules and gates and things like that. So, and I think a lot of you know that we're adding a couple of new police officers and some mental behavioral health support for our police force also, so as part of that advocacy project. And so to the next point, in regard to green, I've been a pretty regular advocate for green issues, especially in regard to our trees, our tree canopy, and our forestry fund. So I'm always asking about that and how it's going, got some questions in even as we speak, but not just in regard to advocacy, but I've been a real boots-on-the-ground person in the community in regard to that. I go to a lot of these restoration events and maintenance events in our parks, taking out invasives and restoring by putting in indigenous plants. So, and then also just anything that comes across the dais in regard to this, our sustainability of our air and water, or you know, reasonable sustainability of our air and water. So I'm an advocate of those things. And then the last thing is in regard to creating a destination community. I feel like one of the things I always try and weigh is, does this item promote creating a destination community? And is it, you know, favorable to small businesses? Is it favorable to development? And I've been an advocate here again, boots-on-the-ground, an active advocate for our small businesses, you know, Small Business Saturday, also, and also when COVID hit. I mean, I personally went and visited, when COVID hit, every single eating establishment in this entire community and asked them, is there anything we can do to help you? And so whether it's big business or small business, I'm really, I work really hard. I'm on the South Side Alliance for Economic Development, so it's a regional seat on the Vice Chair there and on our Economic Development Committee with the city. So really try and stay in touch with whatever issues could be helpful to our business community. And then, and even then, reaching out into the community, your brainstorming about how we can either create education for the workforce, or more sustainable practices, or Healthy Commerce Center downtown, or you know, create, and it's from my interactions with the community, both through campaigning, whether it's door-to-door, you know, on somebody's doorstep, or in a public event, or you know, or even personally, I have a constant open invitation for anybody, I will meet with you one-on-one. And I mean, I've set aside a whole day, opened an entire day, just to sit and wait for people to come and talk to me, so I am very available. And that's how I get my input. So, how much more time do we have?
Thirty-seven seconds.
Oh. Well, so I'd say that's how I built those core values. And when it comes to my decisions from the dice, whether it's creating, you know, evaluating our budget, which we're in budget season right now, or any decision that comes down across the agenda, if it's like, I'm not exactly sure how to weigh this, I weigh it against those three core values. So that's how I stand as your council member and representative. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions, anybody? For Tracy? Matt?
Yeah, I have one question for you. Maybe you can explain this a little bit more in depth. I know that you follow the media or the blogs and everything else. And there's a lot of comments on the Marina and the gates. Could you elaborate as to the benefits and everything that goes on down there when there wasn't the gates?
Well, boy, there's so much that can be said there. The gates were put in chiefly to create a revenue stream so that we can bond, bond the activity down there, the building of, the rebuilding in Vulcan. But as an unintended consequence or unexpected consequences, it really increased safety and upgraded the atmosphere down there. And as a runner regularly running the park down there, you know, the trail, there was nothing so unnerving as coming out of that trailhead and seeing a bunch of very large young men, you know, smoking chemicals and playing music loud and having to, no, I'm gonna have to go through that alone to get to the park. And that doesn't happen down there anymore. And I do hear from residents who live adjacent to the Marina area, and even a block over, that the whole atmosphere down there has really changed, whether it's crime or illicit activities.
Thank you.
I hope that's what you look to go.
Any other questions? All right, well, thank you Tracy.
Thank you.
Next up, Harry Steinbrenz.
Good evening. The wet, wild, and wonderful fall of the Pacific Northwest deal cut to do anything. People get sick. Land up in Pack Ridge, and it started expanding what's now called Midway Park. And so all the parts of the city are starting to enjoy recreational areas, areas where they can congregate, there's even a community garden up there, and it needs to be maintained. Parks also includes after-school care in our Parks and Recs Department, because we need to take care of the kids while their parents are working. And that really is an obligation, I think, that the city should explore. When my kids were growing up, they're both in college now, and they don't need after-school care, sort of. You know, we were lucky to have somebody at Woodmont Elementary School who was there after school and helped take care of the kids. I think that was a great program, and it was very affordable, and it just provided that gap in the day for some adult supervision. And I think we need to really look hard at how we can fund that back again. Pavement, you know, it's about the streets. That's really sort of the quality of life that the city can provide. The city needs to be sure that streets are paved, they're picked up, they're doing the things that make this a nice place to live. And if we're not doing that, then I don't think the City Council is doing its job. We were starting to do some paving about two or three years ago. Unfortunately, COVID put the stop on that. But we need to make sure that it's built into the budget so that there's a regular, steady stream in order to fund regular, steady paving of all the streets in this town on a regular basis. And it's like painting the Golden Gate Bridge. Once you finish, you can go back the other side and start again. And then lastly is planning. Planning's kind of the fun part, because that's where people get excited about this. But we've got a lot of big projects that need to be done, and we've got a fairly limited budget to do that with. This council has decided that the Marina is the first priority, and things have started there. I think that's a good place to start. I think it is the front porch to our city, if you will. And so it's an important piece to do that. But as that gets done, we need to focus on downtown, we need to focus on trying to figure out a solution to the Masonic Retirement Home, and how we can keep that in the community. And so those are the things that I would like to do if I'm elected.
All right. All right. Questions?
Yes, sir.
You mentioned about how you're going to work with children to get into the oil plant, where you wanted to go. What are the specific plans?
I couldn't quite understand you, I'm sorry.
You mentioned that you're working on a plan, on plan, to get the children developed to the point where you would like the stadium to be. What specific plans do you have in mind?
Is this the after-school care program you're asking about?
Yeah, after-school, in-school, whatever program.
Yes, we already had, we had an after-school care program that was fairly extensive, and that's the model that I've used. And what it did, in my own experience, is there were, they had two people who were local students, college-age students, maybe a little bit older than that, who were doing part-time jobs, and they would come into the school and care for the kids. One of them was a former point guard for the Rainier Rams and would just run my kids ragged on the basketball court, and that was great. There was another one there that would do arts and crafts with the kids who preferred to do that. And so there was some different kind of activities, because not one size fits all, and they have to be creative about that. But that's the plan or the model that we follow in trying to put that after-school care back into the schools.
You talked a lot about police support at the beginning of your speech, and I'm wondering, we still have the two safe waves that are rough areas, and we still have a lot of probably minor crime, mailbox thefts, car thefts, lots of it going on right now. What is, are we, I heard we're increasing two officers. Is there any plans for that, or any plans to increase from that, to make this, I mean, it seems like as we become more acceptance of a certain level of crime, where I don't think we should.
Yeah, well, I don't think people are accepting a certain level of crime, and that's why the city's trying to respond to it. I think the city needs to respond to it by putting more cops on the beat so that they have a faster response rate. One of the other things that we can do is to try to make sure that those who are committing those crimes and get convicted of that, and I'm a former criminal defense attorney, so you know, I really do understand people who are committing crimes and the multitude of reasons why people do that, that they have the resources that they need to sort of get their life straightened out a little bit. The problem is that we have some real issues in society that may be on the scope of what a city can do. But a city can provide more police department and a better criminal response.
Thank you. I'm Matt Mahoney, I'm your current deputy mayor. A little bit about myself, I've been a member of the North Hill Community Club for about eight years and a trustee for six. I'm a U.S. Army veteran. My wife and I chaired a waterline give at least thirty or forty to the city, it's gonna feel the same way. I ran, and I'm still sticking to what I ran, is to move this town forward. When I started, I read a document that described our town in 1962, and unfortunately, little had changed when you look at downtown. What I believe is that the Marina development is actually the catalyst. Once we get the Marina developed, we have a private property in the downtown area. Well, that requires a desire for people to come here with amenities that they want to make an investment in our community. And I'm talking developers as well as investors, and even business owners that want to come here. So that's why I truly believe that we need to develop the Marina, because it is our port, as somebody else said, I thought that was a great reference. That's what brings, that's what brings enthusiasm, that's what brings vibrancy to our community. That changes what we look at every day of 1962. The truth is downtown's private property. We got a lot of land bankers there. No, you know, nothing else but that. The truth is, we make it attractive for people that can really buy these properties and develop them, that's what we're after. Something like the theater is a glance of what I think the future's gonna be in our town. We want, of course, keep that small-town build, we want to protect our views and all those kinds of things in mind. And the waterfront down at Redondo is just as important, and we've got some great plans there. I'm really big on the, like, Pac Highway Two. We've got the light rail station coming in, we've got the, you know, light rail station across from Highline College, and that's gonna be important. We've got some great opportunities to build quality, affordable housing, and give people opportunity to commute and to work and have a great place to live in our community as well. We can do that throughout that area. I'm a huge guy on public safety. I was a big advocate with some of our American Rescues Act to fund police. I wanted four, you know, and the compromise I settled for two and a mental response person, and I would have taken four and a couple of mental response for people as well. Because the thing is, is what's happened here, as a lot of people don't realize, is particularly lately, there's been some policy change. King County, the prosecutor is downgrading felonies to misdemeanors or outright dismissals, so he's pushing the problem back on the cities. We've had some recent state legislation, honestly, that where the pendulum maybe has been swung too far. And unfortunately, with COVID, which has been, if they're not an imminent threat, they're not keeping them in there. So the problem is, you've got career criminals out there, and that's why you've got an uptick in violent crime. So what we can do is add more police officers, while this all gets sorted out and figured out and money gets, and funding and solutions, and we want to get there. But with more police, we can at least do deterrence and protect our folks as best we can. It's a reality we're facing. I believe in improvements in parks. I've fully supported us procuring additional property and the playground equipment we put in there and so forth, and I'll continue to look for opportunities. We're working on some parks and trails. Paving, I wanted to talk about that. We've actually been paving streets up here, and it was a great partnership with the Water District, right? The truth is, is we were able to pay half. Paving's expensive. It's a million dollars a mile, right? So you can work with partnership with utilities and get it done. And an example was on District 54 on Eighth Avenue, as well as the 11th Streets we're gonna be paving up here, and we've done 223rd and 216th. So we've been paving roads, we've been using the money allocated for that to get that done. I'm big on the fiscal responsibility, the fact that... How are you doing?
Great. So we've talked a little bit about safety and policing and increasing our police force. I haven't been involved in politics in Des Moines at all, but you know, I read my city currents, and I'm shocked earlier this year to look at pictures of all of our police department, and it's a very, very white area, and we have a very diverse city. Are there any attempts at creating some diversity in our police force?
You know, I asked the same question, and I'll give you the answer I got. They actually really try hard to apply. It's been amazing at who applies at our force. We've been taking the best candidates we can get, but I agree with you. Yes, sir.
The last time I talked to you, last time I talked to you...
Yeah.
We were in the street corner downtown at the Water Station.
Yeah, yeah, Big Ted Plaza.
Yes.
I remember.
I remember that. Now, when you said about the, what you tried to do, the participation of the citizens in the law enforcement, what is happening in mind there?
For, you know, public participation with the police force? Well, I support a police advisory board, which we have, and there's a diversity board as well, which I support as well. And I believe in having the police, like, when I hear about events in the city and so forth, I always notify the chief, and I try to get the police to show up to, you know, have conversations and be available to the public. I'm really proud of our police force. We're one of the most modern thinking groups. We're gonna support the body cameras, we're using drones, we were already using de-escalation techniques. We were using the eight ways, as well as, what was the word I was looking for? We, 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 we always trying to find a new one, where mental response is what I was looking for. We're looking for the best ways to do what I call modern-day law enforcement. That's fair enough. Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Next, we have Priscilla Marcus, running for council, Position Number Three.
Good evening, everyone. It's nice to see friends and neighbors, and opponents. I am thrilled to be here tonight. My name's Priscilla Marcus, and I'm running for Position Three for the City Council. It is currently being held by the Lee Setangs. It means a lot to me to have you here tonight and to take the time to have us come and meet you in person. It is a very challenging time with COVID, and I know that some of us are at this where we're not even wearing a mask, eventually maybe we'll get there. It's been a long time. I wanted to just share a little bit about me, for some of you that may not know, but I work with seniors and people with disabilities. And my goal from point A to B, especially people with disabilities that have maybe a little bit more challenge when it comes to getting from point A to B. And so it's been something that I've been involved with for over 30 years, actually over 31 years. So it's something that really means a lot to me, and so about three years ago, I pursued a position with the Des Moines Senior Services Advisory Committee. It's a mayoral appointment, so I've been on that committee for about three years. I wanted to really give back to the community, and that was my way of starting to get involved with the city. So it kind of gives me a good opportunity now to pursue City Council with who I've met, the kinds of work that I've done. And so I really believe that I can bring a different perspective maybe than what is on the council at the moment, being from a transportation background and also a background with working with people with disabilities and seniors. If elected, my highest priorities include public safety. I am endorsed by the Police Guild, and it's really a big deal to me, as it should be. I have done several ride-alongs, which has been enlightening. Not too much excitement, but I guess that's a good thing in a sense. But there's more opportunity for ride-alongs. So I really look forward to being on the council and being more involved with Public Safety and Emergency Management Group and being involved with that effort. Economic development of the Des Moines Marina and the Redondo Marina is certainly way high on the list, and revitalization of downtown and the surrounding neighborhoods. And of course, affordable housing is important. It's not necessarily something that I have talked about very much, but I think it's important. And job creation to me is even more important with the opportunity to have a livable wage. So all of those things are important to me, and they're my highest priorities. Certainly, I have not been an elected official, so I don't have the experience that Tracy has and Matt has speaking this evening. But what I'd like to say is, I really look forward to the opportunity, because I think, again, I can bring a perspective with my skills and my expertise to the table as a collaborator, as someone that is transparent, and someone that wants to really build consensus. So with that, I have been endorsed, like I said, from the Police Guild. I just recently received an endorsement from the Seattle King County Realtors. Several of the members of the council have endorsed me, and I know individuals, and I appreciate that endorsement. I've also had the endorsement of the 33rd District of Democrats and the Diversity and Inclusion Democrats. So with that, I hope that you've gained some little background about me and where I'm at and what my interests are. Certainly look forward to your questions, if you have any questions this evening.
Okay. Any questions?
Sure.
You mentioned about economic development. Everybody who's running for any office anywhere in the country mentions economics, they're all under the same level of the most important things that go from in our society. What exactly do you have in mind?
Well, economic development, again, there's a lot, and I think, you know, previous speakers have already said, we have a gem in this city. There's a lot of opportunities in Des Moines for more economic development. And I think that one of the real gems is the Marina. And so with the development that is underway, that's being planned, that's going to really bring a lot of opportunity and a lot of business into Des Moines. And that's really what I'm referring to, it's just giving us more opportunity for growth in our economic arena, so that we can be even more successful as a city. I mean, one of the things that Matt had brought up, development is gonna be really critical for the city to really maintain and evolve and become even stronger. I hope that answers your question.
Thank you.
Sure.
You talked about job creation and livable wage. What do you think of livable wage is for, let's say, a single mother with a small child?
What do I think of livable wages?
Yeah, what would that be?
I would say certainly living in Washington State in this area...
Yeah, in King County.
In King County. A livable wage would be at least on an annual basis, and again, I'm just, haven't been asked that question before. I would say at least, you know, fifty to sixty thousand dollars annually, probably a lot more, maybe a little bit more. I know the median is about seventy thousand, because it's difficult, especially depending on where you're living.
So assuming they're living in Des Moines, and...
Well, that's what I mean.
Yeah, so if a little, let's say you said seventy thousand, so that would be, I don't know, thirty-some odd dollars an hour. How would you be able to help create jobs of that amount in our community?
Well, I think it takes more than just me, it takes a team. And the City Council is just one entity, one group of people that will be working with the city manager, the staff, to come up with ways in which that could become more than where we're at now with the livable wage that we don't necessarily have. You know, we're looking at minimum wage, and the requirements for minimum wage, you know, fifteen dollars an hour.
I think minimum wage is fifteen fifty an hour.
Fifteen fifty?
Thirteen fifty.
Thirteen fifty?
Well...
It's fifteen.
It's fifteen. It's fifteen.
We've got time, I'm sorry.
We're good?
Yeah.
State fifteen, so here in Seattle fifteen.
Fifteen.
Federal thirteen fifteen.
Okay, thank you. I thought it was fifteen.
Thank you, Priscilla.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. And we're good, right?
Yeah. Soleil Lewis, running for council, Position Number Seven.
Oh, gosh. Thank you to the North Hill Community Club for inviting me here today. You know, my name is Soleil Lewis, I'm running for City of Des Moines, City Council, Position Number Seven. I am a special education teacher. I'm also a proud Teamster 763 Union Member. I'm endorsed by Congressman Adam Smith, the Representative Tina Orwell of the Amazing 33rd District, and also the Washington State Educators Association and the MLK Labor Council. I'm here today, and the reason why I'm running for City Council is because of a 3.6% sales-use tax that went into effect in our city, and there was no vote from the 31,792 people who live here. Imagine that, no vote. Thirty-one thousand seven hundred ninety-two people who live in this great city. But moreover, that means that anything you buy in Des Moines is affected by a sales-use tax that you did not receive a ballot on. So you think about the real-life implications of this. When you look at your daughter or your son who has, let's say, diabetes, you have to now tell them, I'm sorry. Not because of the fact that it's my fault, but I'm in a situation now, I can't buy insulin for you, because I now have to pay for taxes that I did not get a vote on. because I now have to pay for taxes that I did not get a vote on. And I do not want anyone in this community to not have a say in how their tax dollars are being used. The other factor in this is that because we live in a city of 31,792 people, we also have a situation in our city where only 31% of our total population will shop downtown and spend their tax dollars in our city. They would rather go to Bury and C-Tac Des Moines. And if we truly are talking about economic development long term, we also have to look at how are we supporting our businesses reflective to the aesthetics and how our businesses look, the grant supports that we could provide in partnership with a better relationship with our King County Councilmember, and how our grant flows and how we are actually connecting to not just the 30% in the Marina, which is great, but the 70% that live in every other area of Woodmont, Zenith, and North Hill. And that is the reflective change that we need to see in this city moving forward. And that is why I'm running because I reflect that of living in Woodmont, seeing how people that look like me are not always at the table, but they're always there for the vote. So that's just me in a nutshell, why I'm running for City of Des Moines City Council, position seven, so.
Yeah, for sure.
Okay, all right. Last round. Go to three minutes, okay. Questions for Soleil?
I was very upset when I got my last Currents magazine and saw, there are activities for kids, there was nothing. Absolutely nothing. Activities for seniors, absolutely nothing. I mean, I grew up in a town of, you know, 13,000 and we had activities for kids. It wasn't even an incorporated city, but that was the priority. We had, you know, there was softball, there was day camps, there were after schools, there was arts and crafts at the playground. There was nothing here. I absolutely don't get it. I mean, so here we have, we're paying these extra money, but then there's nothing. So here we're, we've got Parks Department and, and we've got, you know, the highest paid city manager around with a great big nice fat salary and ongoing and blah, blah, blah. And if I hear one more time about this great rating he got us, well, that's great that, you know, we certainly have paid for that. But what do the kids get out of it? A big fat nothing, you know? So if this is a city for everyone, well, then the kids need to feel part of it. And here we're paying, but again, what are, you know, what are the kids in Woodmont getting out of it?
The biggest thing that I can tell you is it's also about, actually, when I speak to people in my community of Woodmont, but also North Hill and every part of Des Moines, they tell me that I do not have accessibility for my kids for daycare. It's a big issue. And the other issue too in our city is that we need to implement a grant administrator. We should have proposed those when the American Rescue Plan Act funds came down the line. There should be consideration that we have hired a grant administrator, someone to provide oversight to, also even looking at Best Starts for Kids, the levy, that we can track the money and also make sure we have a plan in action.
Have you thought about instead of city council, have you thought about running for the school board?
Oh, gosh, no. I think for me, the biggest thing that I could see as a teacher.
You're talking about is for the Highline School District, it has nothing to do with the, really, the, here.
So the biggest thing that I can say as an office manager, working in the Highline School District, is that the city is always in relationship with.
So you work at the Highline School District also?
No, I used to be office manager, Highline School District. And one thing that I can say is that the Highline School District is always in partnership and working with other cities. So another factor that you have to think about is that when it comes to daycare services, when I was an office manager, I had to deal with parents calling me day in and out saying, how do I get daycare services in Des Moines? Who do I contact? I find that the City of Des Moines had partnerships with certain daycare services, but those daycare services were not free. So if you were making, you were lower income and you did not have the money available to pay for daycare services, it did not benefit you, that partnership. And that is why I'm running for city council as well, because everything is always, always interconnected and you can never get away from that factor, so.
I just had a clarification, clarification question for myself. The 3.6% in-use tax that you said was Des Moines only, are you talking about the King County one with the?
No, no. At the peak of the pandemic, a 3.6% sales use tax went into effect in our city. It was, went into effect from the city manager. This is in the City of Des Moines. How that works is that sales use tax affects anything that you buy in Des Moines. But moreover, the reasoning for why it was implemented was due to the fact that there was failed revenue, there was a loss of revenue due to the pandemic. You will see in our 2020-21 ballots, you will see in the City of Normandy Park.
We have a lot of snacks and refreshments back there, so please take a, let's take a five minute break and we'll get back to speakers.
I can't imagine what it would be like if I was a parent.
I'm excited about that.
What I hear is the city of, the city of, the city of. That's what I hear.
I mean.
I'm a little bit nervous.
I'm just so tired of the.
Yes.
You're awfully from the left side. All right. Appreciate everybody's questions and participation so far, so let's keep this going. Gene Oxiger? Did I pronounce that correctly?
Oxiger, yes.
Oxiger, okay.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you for being here and thank you to the North Hill Community Club for sponsoring us. I really appreciate it. My name is Gene Oxiger. I've been in the community as a community, not the city. I've been, I've lived in Redondo for 45 years and I've been a citizen activist that entire time. I was the president of the Redondo Community Club for 14 years, so. But clear at the other end of town, I appreciate, you know, the fact that we have, you know, a community club up here at North Hill and, and I'll talk about, more about that in a moment. But yeah, I've, I've been involved in all kinds of activities. A lot of them was in 1996. I helped run the campaign to annex Woodmont and Redondo to the city. And then I actually went off to, I was deployed as a journalist with the Seattle Post Intelligencer and I became the president of the newsman until 2009, at which time we walked in one day, we're told, yeah, this is it. This is the last edition and 163 of us, I think, were gone the next day. So one of the things that happened is that I was trained on proprietary software, so I had to come back. I had to come out and go to Highline College to learn how to use the generic software. So I came back and one of the first things that I was asked was, can you help save Mount Rainier Pool? Because the city had decided to have the money to keep operating the pool. So I ran that campaign. I'm proud to say that here we were in the midst of the worst recession since the Great Depression and we got the taxpayers, 64% of the taxpayers agreed that having something for our kids, a place for our kids to learn how to swim was important. And after that, I was asked to help do the same thing with the City of Taquilla and help save the Taquilla Pool. This is an example of active, you know, participation areas that, that our kids really need. And I then, in 2014, became the president of the Des Moines Legacy Foundation. And our efforts have always been to support disadvantaged youth and seniors and to enable them to participate in the Parks Rec programs. So I've had a lot of, you know, experience in the community, a lot of volunteer service. And so right now, what I'm doing is, the reason I'm running is, I'm really concerned about what's happening with, to our kids, particularly within relation to, you know, the COVID pandemic. You stop and think that kids are in school for 13 years, K through 12. By the time, we're actually rapidly approaching two years that they're going to have disruptive education. This is a serious, serious problem. And we need, we're not, the, the teachers at this point are not particularly getting any help from the city. Before the pandemic, we had, you know, very active programs, before and after school programs, you know, rec programs for the kids that, you know, participate in. These are very, okay, these are very important and it's a, it's an active process that we have going here. Kids are actually involved and there is program. Unfortunately, what I see is happening with our parks right now is we're going to a passive program. Where basically what it is is that we will have. Where basically what it is, is that we will have opportunities for kids to go and play at a park, but really the only thing the city is doing is mowing the lawn. There isn't the opportunity to, you know, have. Go ahead.
Okay, questions? What position are you running for?
Uh, position three.
Okay, anybody have other questions for Gene? Oh, I'm funny, I'm looking at my iPhone.
Okay, I have one. So, what, what kinds of things would you like to see done?
Well, okay, one of the problems we got right now is, you know, particularly now with the pandemic, we do have a problem with, you know, we're down to one after-school location in the city. The kids are having to be cussed at the field house. It used to be at each individual city and we, it's individual school and we used to also have before-school program, okay? The rec programs are out and which, I'm really disappointed in Des Moines' response to this because if you look at Berrien, because it's online, normally it has to be an even number, but they have a twenty-three-page brochure of activities for kids and seniors to do this fall. It's twenty-four pages in Federal Way, it's twenty-four pages in Kent, sixteen pages in C-TAC, it's forty pages in Auburn, we have eight lines. Eight lines, okay? People talk about, you know, police, policing and public safety. The, when you talk about juvenile crime, it happens usually between three and six P.M. The number-one way to stop that is to have, you know, supervision and activities for the kids to, you know, participate in. We're not doing that. We need to restore that.
Yes, okay, I, again, I don't know what you guys are doing, but why don't you bring this up to the school board? Why, why not go to Highline and say, get your act back together?
It's not the school district's responsibility.
It is the school district's problem.
It, it is not the school's responsibility.
If they take and, and spend a little bit more money on the students and forget all... In fact, what I'd like to see is the school board go after the Highline School District and say, we're whacking off thirty-three percent of the top people at the, at the office. You're out of here. We're gonna take those funds, we're gonna put it back into the schools for nurses and for councilmen. We have no council in the schools. Our students have no way to talk to a counselor to go on. Our, our, our school system here in the Highline School District is horrible. Just horrible. Look what they've done to our premier, Mount Rainier. They have killed it.
Okay, I, well, we'll get to your comment, your comment was, your comment was...
School, 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 school. And they want Des Moines to be sponsored in the school.
We're talking about parks and rec.
Yes, exactly. It's parks and rec.
Well, they've talked about parks and rec and forget about the school, school, school.
We're talking about parks and rec.
Everything has been about the school system.
Educating our children is probably, you know, people talk about our future. If we don't educate our children, we're gonna be in deep trouble.
Correct. I don't, we haven't, we haven't educated our children for the last eighteen months, have we?
There has always been a partnership between the cities.
The last eighteen months, the Highline School District has done nothing for our students. Nothing.
I, I would disagree with you, but there has always been partnership between the cities and the Parks and Rec Department and the schools. You know, there is, there's that time period that schools are dealing with the students and, and, you know, direct education. But as far as other activities, which, you know, the, the rec leagues, those are important learning situations.
So, what's your football basketball or baseball?
I know, Gene, I know, we could stop if we were, we've gone through our time already. So, uh, thank you, Gene.
Okay.
On the next, Brad Dovian, council number, uh, position number five.
Hi, thank you, uh, North Hill Community Club for having me here today. Uh, I'm running for position five. I am running for city council because I like to help people. Um, I really, uh, in my community, um, I've been in Des Moines for fourteen or so years. I am a block watch captain for the last ten years. If you don't feel safe going to a park, you're not gonna go to a park. If you don't feel safe walking to school or walking your kids to school, you gotta drive to school. And that's not good for the environment, that's not good for your community. If you don't feel safe taking a walk around your neighborhood, walking your dog, uh, taking your kid out in the stroller, you're not gonna do it and that leaves, uh, that leaves our communities more vulnerable. And so, by enhancing, uh, public safety, uh, really supporting the police department and trying to keep crime down where people do feel safe, uh, safety as being one of their pri... Safety goes hand in hand with everything else. One of my other, uh, big issues is economic development in the area. I would love to see, and I brought this to the city council a few years ago in public comments, is I would love to see like a cohesive signage in our downtown core. I, I don't know, I'm, I'm no esthetician or anything, but the mismatch of banners and, you know, temporary signs and, you know, everything that's down there, I would really like to see kind of, you know, something like you see in other little seaside towns where, uh, you know, all the signs look the same. I mean, I don't want to go full Leavenworth where everything's, you know, all German like that and everything. But it looks nice when you go to those towns and people go to Leavenworth because they like that atmosphere. I'd like people to come to Des Moines because there is an atmosphere of cohesiveness in the downtown area. Um, and I put together a proposal to help make that happen in our town. So, it's not a burden on our small business owners to, you know, put new signs up and everything, you know, and for new businesses that come in as well. I have a master's in cybersecurity. I've been doing I.T. work for about twenty years or so. I like to solve problems. Uh, that's why I got involved in that. And in today's climate with, with all the ransomware and files getting hijacked and, and everything, having somebody on the council that really understands that aspect that I've been doing for the last twenty years, I think would be a good addition to our council as well. It's, it's the new times that we live in. Things have changed so much in just the last four or five years on that level and, and that's just another aspect of crime as well. I'm done, I'm gonna use all my time.
Okay.
That's good. I'll take, I'll take some questions.
You, um, you talked about the, the economic development during, like, on the main street of, of Des Moines. We, it's from, from the candidates that I've heard, I mean, our biggest, our biggest push right now is for the Marina development.
Right.
But the Marina development is gonna take several years at least.
Oh, yeah.
What, I mean, so do we have to wait for the downtown part to develop and we have to wait for the Marina before the rest of the downtown starts developing more?
The, so, it's one of those, it's one of those catch-twenty-twos where, well, nobody's gonna come until we do this. Nobody's gonna come until we do this. And so, but if you don't, but we don't have the money to do this unless the people come. So, you kinda have to be, it's kinda like Thanksgiving dinner. You gotta be working on four or five different dishes at the same time and try and make it all come together at the same time. The Marina is getting, uh, some work done right now and that's great. It's gonna be a good facelift for our front porch down there. We, once that starts happening and businesses start seeing that, they're gonna start developing a little bit more down there. And if we can get, um, so, a little more cohesiveness to, or accessibility between the Marina and like Seventh Avenue and Marine View Drive, then it'll be a more, uh, comprehensive experience when you go down there. Instead of, I'm going down to the Marina, I'm going to the restaurant. If you just go, I'm going downtown, you can do the Marina, you can do the restaurant, you can do it all together. And that's, that's my vision for, I mean, that might be a, might not even be a five-year plan. That may be a ten-year plan down the road, but it's baby steps. You can't eat, uh, eating a whole elephant starts with one bite, right? So, you gotta start somewhere.
Other questions?
I covered it all.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you. All right. Well, it wasn't planned this way, but the school board position is now up. Um, and I don't, and I believe Angelica is not here. Okay, so we have Jennifer Fuchamba, running for Highline School Board, position number two.
Um, good evening. First of all, thank you so much for giving me the opportunity to speak to you this evening. My name is Jennifer Fuchamba and I'm an educator that's running for school board. I'm running for the Highline School Board Director two position. Um, I have lived in the Highline School District my entire life. I'm a product of the Highline School Board, um, not the school board. I am a product of the Highline School District. I got, I went to Gregory Heights Elementary, Sylvester Middle School and I'm a proud alum of the Highline High School. Go Pirates! I also have left a legacy here as my son also attended Gregory Sylvester and just graduated this June from Highline High School as well. I currently am a college and career counselor in the Taquilla School District at Foster High School. Prior to that, I worked in the Highline School District at Evergreen High School as a college and career specialist and I also worked at Shunah Middle School, working with students with special needs. I have also participated, have been an active member in my local union, the Taquilla Education Association, as the vice president of my union. I've sat on two bargains for our union, so I understand the needs of the district as well as the needs of our educators and our students. I think that it's long overdue for school boards to have educators sitting on them because we know exactly the needs of our students and our families, which is part of why I'm running. I think that it's important that we're sending the voices of our stakeholders. Those are our students and our families, as well as our teachers and support staff in our buildings. Oftentimes, decisions are made with regards to our students and with regards to curriculum and other programming that happens. And they invite our students, they invite our educators to the table when they've already basically decided what they're going to do. Maybe they have two different pieces of curriculum and they're like, choose between these two. However, there was a big vetting process that happened before that and so I think it's really important that we bring those folks to the table sooner than later. We have a big responsibility coming up in Highline by selecting a new superintendent. And I've heard a lot of talk about, um, council, or city council candidates that really find value in partnering with the school district. I agree. I think that a school district can't do it alone. A city can't do it alone. It takes a community to raise our children and it's really important, if I'm elected to school board, that I will be partnering with my councils that I serve. My service area will be Berrien, but that does not mean I will be exclusively just partnering with the council in Berrien. I will be working with Des Moines C-TAC, Norby Park and White Center to make sure that the resources that are available, and there are resources out there, that we are doing it with authenticity and we're making sure that we are bridging the gap for our families so that they understand what is available for them. I think it's really important that the cities and the school district work together because that's the way we can best serve our community, I believe. I think, I think I covered it all, but I'm willing to answer questions and I'm ready, so.
All right, questions?
If, if no one else has a question, I think it's appropriate, you know, since this is...
Sure, no, absolutely.
Are you familiar with the Design Engineering Program at Pacific Middle School?
Funny you should ask that. I have been watching a lot of the school board meetings and I'm very aware that they've cut that program or in the process of cutting that program. To me, it's really, as a person who survived high school because I was participating in programs like theater, school newspaper and things like that, when programs like that cut, get cut, that really adversely affects our young people. That all has to do with state testing, things like that. So, when, um, schools are not meeting their annual yearly progress, for example, oftentimes, programs like that will get cut in order to put kids who are struggling in reading or math into more reading and math, which I can tell you, as a person who struggled in math, that was the last place I wanted to be, is in another math class. Programs like Design and Engineering is a great way for students who maybe are not fond of math but are able to get math skills from a program like that. I also believe that programs like theater, music, all of those support reading and math and science. It all is interchanging. I would have never made it through high school if it wasn't for the art program that I was in, the theater program I was in at Highline. It's with, because of my theater teacher that I graduated high school and then went on to college. If it wasn't for those programs, I would not be standing here today. So, I really do value programs such as that. Um, I see in my high school kids that really thrive in those kinds of programs, so.
No, that's, you...
Um, so I do see how it's really important for them and I will be a strong advocate for keeping programs like that because our kids need it. They need that outlet. It's not just about English, math, and science. There's different ways to learn those skills, so, yes.
My wife was a parent educator at, at Mount Rainier High School and I noticed the, the, the discipline or the lack of discipline just keep getting worse and worse, year by year, by year, by year. She was hurt a couple of times and nothing ever, you know, the, I mean, I, I don't mean we have to punish kids, but there has to be some sort of discipline within the school systems. It seems like we've walked away from that and, and the kids know this. The kids know that they're, what they can do and what they can get away with.
To be honest, like, when it comes to things like discipline, it really depends on the administrator in the school. I've worked in schools where I've had administrators that fostered a really positive environment and a positive environment that kids were there to learn and that were very respectful. They brought different things to the table, but I've also worked with administrators that were checked out and that's when I find that more problems happen, is when the administrators are not participatory. I can think back to a few years at Highline High School. The students will tell you that the principal sat in her office most of the day. It was never out in the community, in a school building and a lot of things occurred. There was a lot of racism at the school. There was a lot of, um, not necessarily violence in that way, but like verbal violence between kids and, um, that is a result of an administrator that is just not in the hallway.
But is that the board's responsibility to...
It is. And what the board did is they moved her to another school.
That doesn't solve the problem.
So, personally, it does not solve the problem for me. Like, I want to have the best administrators in my school buildings. Um, I think that that's really important. And I worked with all kinds, like, I worked with all. I worked at the Evergreen Campus where they were three small schools. I had three administrators and none of... There was, I worked for there for like eight years and out of the eight years, I had maybe two really solid administrators. And I had an administrator there that let kids basically run the school and that's when you run into problems. And it is the school board's responsibility, um, to make sure that the people that we're hiring are there for our kids and have the, are there for the right reasons and not just there, I don't know, sometimes I don't know why they're there. But it is our responsibility and that is something I would value very greatly. I've been able to hire a new principal at Foster High School. I was on the hiring community, uh, committee and I will say, we got an outstanding principal at Foster. I've also been on the committee to hire a superintendent in Highline because we fired one of our superintendents and we have a really quality superintendent now who has a heart for kids and I can see the dynamic in our district changing and the behavior of our kids changing as well because we have stronger administrators, so, yes.
I understand that the dress codes are totally gone now in the Highline School District. I was, one of my granddaughters works in, in Des Moines and said that the young lady from Mount Rainier showed up where you can see-through, no broad, totally one-hundred percent see-through. Okay, I, I don't know what school district would ever allow that, other than the Highline School District. Would you go on in or if you are elected, would you look into, um, St... Would you go on in, or if you are elected, would you look into stopping?
Well, I think that's a pretty sweeping statement to say that only the Highline School District has that policy. My son just graduated from Highline High School, and I can say that when I've been in attendance, and I go to a lot of events at Highline as an alumni, I don't see dress code violations like that. And so I would say it's a sweeping statement to say that that is a Highline School District thing. However, I do think that we over-police our young women. And what you're describing is probably, is definitely not appropriate, but we do over-police our women, our young women, and how they're dressed. If I see girls at home because like they have a sweater that comes down a little bit, and that's dress code violation. So we have to have a balance. We cannot be over-policing our young girls and saying they're a distraction. Our boys also have to learn how to behave around, around girls as well. I have young girls in my school that are very well-developed, and, you know, they're dressed, they're covered completely, but they can call a dress code violation because their T-shirt that covers everything is too tight. So there has to be a balance. What you're describing is definitely extreme, and of course, that should be addressed. However, oftentimes, our young girls are policed at a higher level than our young boys are. And so there has to be a balance. But I do think it's sweeping to say it's only the Highline School District, and it is the Highline School District that has its policies, because I don't agree with that.
Well, I guess I, what, the way I look at it is that I know students, good students, have actually had to leave the Highline School District. Well, their parents actually put them in Kennedy or, or went to Federal Way.
I would like to qualify, like, understand what you mean by a good student because personally, I kept my child in the Highline School District. I have a lot of friends that he grew up with that are girls that are staying in the Highline School District, all of which are outstanding young people that have gone on to college, have gone into apprenticeship programs. So when you say good students, that's a, like, a pretty charged statement to say. We have a lot of outstanding students in the Highline School District. Outstanding. And to make statements like, well, the good students have been taken to a Kennedy High School or somewhere else is a very charged statement, and I don't totally appreciate it as a parent of a student in Highline.
I'm sorry, I know it's getting late, but I did have one, I think it's important. You have some idea, how do you think that schools can help a lot of students who are now far behind because of COVID catch up in our education system?
So like, some of the things that need to happen is really building partnerships to make sure that we have extra tutoring available to our young people. I think like Jean was saying, like having a partnership with the community centers. I know in Bierian, the Bierian Community Center has a robust after-school program at both Sylvester and Highline High School where they do offer tutoring plus enrichment activities. And I think that's how you support our young people. And I also just want to like feel this misnomer that our kids are so far behind. Our kids learned a lot in the last year. They learned resilience. They learned how to overcome adversity in a time where, I mean, it was a struggle. And as an educator too, we also learned a lot. We had to learn how to educate our young people in a time where we, that's not the normal way of doing things. And I can tell you, our kids were showing up, and I've seen our kids perform in this environment that is totally different, but they did learn a lot. And did they learn the classic way of learning? They didn't. But they also learned so many, many great life skills that will help them in their future, so. I think the partnership in having after-school programs, robust after-school programs with tutoring as part of it will be what's helping our students.
Anybody?
Yeah, actually, I think that's, the, the idea of tutoring, I wanted to bring up to you, David. There are so many retired teachers here. I would be happy to, you know, like, have one night a month, you know, a retired teacher sits at a, I can teach reading, I can teach math, I can teach writing. I mean, I can teach reading and writing at high levels, I mean, clear through. Now, my math, basic computation and then forget it.
But a math teacher once told me, all you have to do is a person and then you have to do math. Because I also say that, but.
Yeah, maybe, you know, other than, other than, you know, like, computation.
I will, I will say that, like, we would really appreciate, as a person who works in the school, we would appreciate community offering to help out in our after-school programs because at Foster, we have after-school program. You have to be vaccinated to be in our schools. That is a caveat. And so, but we're, we always are willing to have, have people come in and work with our young people. It's such an advantage, really, so.
But, you know, just one night, one night a, you know, one night a week just has.
No, we actually do have something that's already going on, Dave. We have one night a week where we have, we have one group that comes in on one day a week to tutor kids that are trying to. Yeah, we actually do already have something starting here, and we, we donate the hope, so.
But it's, it's important because it would be great as an educator to know like these resources, and then that way I'm able to partner.
Right, yeah.
You know, and I think sometimes that's the missing link, is that we haven't like access, we don't know all the resources, and if we're making true partnerships with our cities, then we're able to like filter our kids and our families to y'all, so.
So, also, Gregory Heights.
Yay, Gregory Heights!
And Highline. So in 94, when I graduated from Highline, it was still a mess. So you've got a lot of work ahead of you. What would be your first thing you would go after if you got elected?
Well, I think the first thing that I'm excited about doing is hiring a superintendent that puts kids at the center of the decisions that are made. I think that we've had a superintendent that is very good at like talking a good talk, but she doesn't really involve the students in the way, and the families in the way that she should be. I've seen it as a person who worked in the district, I've seen it as a parent. And so I think our opportunity is having leadership in our district that will help bring our community together in a more sincere way and really like taking our kids and like really getting to know them by name, strength, and need, which is her thing. I have a superintendent that I've worked with in Tuck Willa who was really invested in the kids, and the kids knew who she was, and they knew that they could count on her for support, and that really made an impact for our young people. She went on to a different, she moved out of the state with her husband, but I think that that's really important, is having leadership in the district that really stands behind what they're saying, that they know kids by name, strength, and need. Because I can tell you, the superintendent did not know my son at all. And Fitchamba is not like a hard name to forget. I mean, there's only he and I, like, well, and his dad, but his dad doesn't live in Bierian. So, you know. I think that's really important, is having leadership that really values our kids and really values our students' voice because it's their education, and we're all here to help them get to the next level, so. Hope that answered your question?
It helped, yeah.
Okay.
Well, thank you.
Thank you so much.
We go through our list of candidates, and again, I appreciate all the candidates' time that you gave and, and gave us. I mean, it's, we're not a big club, we're not, it's not a huge community, not a huge turnout, but we really do appreciate your time and effort to show up here and talk to us. You know, where we should check off or not.
Essential.
Hold on.
So I just wanted to let, let you all know that there's literature back here for me to, from the candidates that brought. If you'd like to read a little bit about some of us, I think most of this is brought from here, so. Take, take a cruise while the back people were.
Okay, thank you.